City of Lawrence Common Council meeting is now called to order, August 6, 2018.
As coordinator of the Blue Star Banner program, it's a privilege for me to serve in this role.
Can everyone please stand for Pledge of Allegiance and prayer?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Mayor Collier's deep appreciation for our military extends well beyond when he took
all.
For Lord, I want everyone here to keep in mind all the life events that are happening
office in January 2016. As a former coach, dean of students, and U.S.
across our nation and in our community to give us the courage and the right mindset
history teacher with Lawrence Township Schools for over 33 years, he appreciates, respects,
to move forward today on our long agenda that we work together and move forward for
and supports our military for all their contributions.
the best interest of our city. Amen.
I can confidently say that presenting these "We Salute You" packets to these families
Amen. Okay, we have a quorum.
is an honor for him and probably one of his most favorite duties as the mayor of the
Everyone is present.
city of Lawrence.
Next on the agenda is the Blue Star Banner presentation.
We'd also like to thank our common council members sitting behind me for allowing us to share this presentation as we honor one of our deployed military service members and his family. Police Chief David Hoffman and Fire Chief Dino Batalas, who escorted our family tonight, represent all of our first responders who, like the military, stand at the ready to defend our liberties. We're grateful for your service and dedication and continued support of this program and our military. Thank you. I'd also like to introduce and thank our military representative who's standing in for our deployed service member. So Captain Luke T. Goodwill, if you'll stand up. Site Commander, INI Detachment Communication Company, 14th Marine, 4th Marine Division. Thank you for your service and for standing in for Private First Class Kyle Larravia and his family tonight. Thank you all. The City of Lawrence Blue Star Banner program was developed by Candy Davis in 2009. This program honors the men and women who volunteered to go into the active military, reserves, or National Guard in order to protect our freedom. The 33 banners you see hanging in our city streets honor those who are stationed either domestically or internationally and are currently away from their family and friends serving our country. In addition to recognizing our military service members, it's also important that we thank their families as well. Many of them are keeping watch, they're serving our communities, and holding down the fort until their service members return safely. They too make many sacrifices while their loved ones help defend this great nation. The city of Lawrence now proudly displays a new banner for Private First Class Kyle W. Larravia, United States Marine Corps. Mayor Collier will now present the "We Salute You" packet. So if the Larravia family and Captain Goodwill will please come forward. Accepting the "We Salute You" packet on Kyle's behalf of his very proud and supportive family, his parents Jeff and Becky Larravia, Kyle's two brothers Jake and Seth, and his aunt Stacy Ny House. Or close. Private First Class Kyle W. Larravia, United States Marine Corps. Kyle graduated from Lawrence Central High School with honors and excelled in cross-country, swimming, and golf. Beginning with hunting trips at the young age of 12, Kyle loved the outdoors, especially hiking, biking, and swinging from vines. His dedicated laser focus, determination, and ability to finish tasks to completion helped Kyle realize that a future in the military was a good fit. After working in the firearms department before leaving for boot camp, Kyle shipped off after a short summer at home. He's a special young man whose priorities are God, country, and family, and those who know him are aware of his passion for all three. Thank you, Larravia family. Thank you. You can be seated. The city of Lawrence would also like to recognize fireman recruit Jacob R. Pigott, United States Navy. His banner is now raised, although his family was able to be here tonight. That concludes our Blue Star Banner family presentation this evening. To all who are currently serving and for all of our veterans who have served our country, we thank you.
Thank you. You're welcome. Thank you. Next on the agenda, we have comments of council members and special recognitions or resolutions.
Madam President.
Yes, Counselor Freeman.
I have sent down a request for Department of Public Works in Indy to look at a left-turn signal off of 56th Street going into the Harrison Park Drive, going into Penarol Bridge and BP and Star Bank. The traffic around 7:00 a.m. is very hectic, and seeing how Indianapolis controls the streetlights on 56th Street, this intersection, I would like administration to look into it. And then I want to send a thank you to Scott, who's on vacation this week but still answered my email. He drafted up a letter to Mr. Horn, who is the HOA of Kenniston Farms Villas, and explaining to him why his excluded properties in Kenniston Farm Villas is what's not the responsibility of the city of Lawrence to fix their streets. And I have the drafted-up letter. Clerk, if you... And another one, as far as the pipe at Indian Lake, he also gave me some information on that. They haven't had an interior inspection performed on this section of the sewer main, and the results indicated that there are no structural issues with the pipe at this time and that required immediate action. However, given the age and some of the areas where corrosion was observed, the recommendation, they can start that soon, but it would be costly. And that's it.
Any other counselors?
Madam President.
Ms. Counselor Jones?
First of all, I'd like to give kudos to Mary Jo with her Blue Star Banner. It's always nice to come and see that and how professional she is with that, and it's just exciting to see that. Also, I was in contact with Eric Martin on Janera Park with a problem, and within an hour, he got back to me and fixed it, so I want to give kudos to him for the quick work on that. And then back to an issue that's been here for a while is our code enforcement officers. We've been told we've had three. No one knows who these three are. I've continually turned in properties. 12,407 East 75th Street, it's been like 45 days, the grass is five feet high, old culvers, next to the Steak 'n Shake litter, so on, so on. And it'd be nice if we get clarification of who these three code enforcement officers are, because DPW doesn't know, the police department doesn't know, no one knows, so we can get this fixed. And my understanding is, new world system with inspections and code enforcement is still not up and working, so it'd be nice if we could figure out how to get that done. I mean, we advertise on our billboards what a great city this is, and we all love it, and we want all these properties to look nice and take care of these vegetation and litter problems. Thank you.
Any other counselors?
Madam President.
Yes, Counselor Wells?
Last meeting on the bills was a... One of the bills was for the billboards, and I inquired from the controller my concern on these billboards and as to how many we were renting, how much exactly did they cost. Wanted some detailed information on it, and I was just hoping that that would be presented either to me, you know, by an email, by some form of communication. I have yet to receive anything on it yet. The other thing that come to my attention, I was forwarded an email by a citizen, and it stated that there's going to be a political tent or booth at the upcoming Public Safety Days. And it's always been my understanding and tradition, whether it's a rule, law, or just a common courtesy, that there is no political venues or political activity during Public Safety Days. And my understanding is, this booth is also going to be selling tickets for a big-screen TV. If the administration would like to weigh in on that, where, you know, where they stand, I'd like to hear about it. And after you excuse my voice, I've been battling a cold for some time.
I'll put an end to this rumor real quick. That email was for a voter registration, and on top of that email was Lawrence Township Republican Club. Now, this is no different, or would have been no different than registering people who are registering voters at Fridays at the Fort or at the Fort Ben Farmers Market. Responding to your concern, Counselor Wells, there will be no booth for Lawrence Township Republican voter registration at Community Safety Day. It was never the intent for it to be a political booth, it was for voter registration only, no different than what's been done already at Fridays at the Ford and another, I don't want to say, but I have instructed the person that will not have a booth now, so that booth now is available to somebody else.
Madam President, I am so sorry, but I just have... I just can't bite my tongue here. Just some facts. The state of Indiana has some of the worst voter turnout in the country, for the citizens to know. Not to get political debate, but the bottom line is, we also have some of the strictest voter registration laws in the country. The second thing we've also done that's major in this city, I think it's good for all of us to know, is that the state, on both political parties, cleared the voter registration rolls because they were so inadequate, so badly, the misinformation was horrible. So, Madam President, I'm only... Thank you for giving me this time to say this, is that I am sorry. I think it is extremely important, when we have a community event, to try to encourage people to have their civic duty, to register, to vote. We have a lot of transient people in Marion County who think that they're eligible, that they're already registered to vote, but they're not, because the rolls have been cleaned. So I just encourage this administration, and I encourage the city, to encourage our cities to be civically involved, and civic engagement starts with voting. I'm sorry, Madam President, I hope I wasn't out of line, but that's just my feeling, and that's the reason why I'm up here serving my community, and I encourage my other citizens to do the same. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Giles. Any other counselors?
Madam President.
Yes, Counselor Williams?
Let me weigh in on the last concern. Given the gravity of the increase in the crime in our city, I understand the concerns of both counselors, I get it. But Safety Day is an opportunity to talk about some safety measures that will protect our citizens. I think that would be the priority when it comes to Safety Day. So I thank the mayor for dispelling that rumor that it would be a political event, and we move forward. I think that everyone understands how important it is to vote, I get it, but right now, we need to address our crime issues. Getting back to my District 4 issues or concerns, so at the last meeting, you instructed that to have some answers for my concerns, and I just wanted to know, are those concerns, or do I need to rehash what my concerns are? I have some additional concerns as well.
Okay, so let me stop right here first and just ask the administration. I had asked the last meeting that Counselor Williams' concerns, which have been brought up pretty much every meeting, that those be addressed. If we could have those directly and specifically addressed, so that we can close those items out and move on to the other new items that he has, I would extremely appreciate it. If we need to bullet point those out again and just have you come up and address it, I feel like there's been adequate notice, and if you could please do that, I would certainly appreciate it.
Did you get the email, President James, that I sent early last week?
I did not, but I was on vacation, so... And if you could just... Did the email address all of Counselor Williams' concern?
I usually send it to you and Counselor Wheeler. I thought you disseminated it out there.
But I was also on vacation.
Okay. Addressed... I'm trying to remember exactly what it was that was on. It was a fairly long email. The first thing is about the bridge, I believe, on German Church. And bridges are the responsibility... German Church is considered a primary arterial, which means the city of Indianapolis, DPW, does major reconstruction projects on German Church. We can patch, we can pay, but we can't reconstruct. Every bridge in Marion County is under the control of Indianapolis DPW, so no bridges, regardless of where they are at, are under the control of the city of Lawrence. I think you had a question about the drainage problem at 65th and Carroll. I've been out there with Scott Salisbury now three different times. We've met with the engineer for the Weaver Landing Housing Addition. Looked at the culvert. The culvert that was in reference actually had whoever the paving company, McCordsville, hired pushed asphalt down in front of that culvert. They have now been ordered by the Indiana Sewer and Water Conservation person who met us out there to get rid of that blockage. There will be a larger culvert that will go in there once the addition starts, that will be sometime toward the end of next summer. The McCordsville has agreed to work with the city of Lawrence to deepen and widen the ditch across the Lipscomb property to match up with the Indian Branch, which should take care of any additional water. However, under stormwater guidelines, that, whatever that addition does, they cannot increase any kind of flow of water than what there already is. So if there is any additional flow of water, that has to be taken care of through rather deep and large, simply water-retention ponds that are going to be over there. So we have met with them, talked with the engineer, and with the McCordsville representative, town manager, and Sewer and Water Conservation. That is kind of a distance off, it's a year from now. We won't really know what the actual impact of the impermeable surfaces will be. We have a pretty good way of telling what they will be, but we also understand that under new guidelines, they have to be good enough to handle a 100-year event, not a 10-year event. So it'll be quite a bit more involved and quite a bit more handling of water in there. Let me address the question Counselor Jones you raised. We do have three code enforcement officers, Bill Anthony, Tom Affaker, and John Kapaski. Those have been in place for as long as I've been here. Lawrence Fire Department has Eric Gamble and Dino Batalas, who are code enforcement on the fire end. On the utility end, Tim Gann, Nick Kanter, and Dave Schu for backflow, grease traps, and service line inspections. Andy Hall, Kenny Ripberger, and Bill Hassan for new water in San Tere sewer main construction. If you have the issue with high grass, that would be a call, it would go directly to DPW. That person's house would be visited, the violation would be cited, they have a period of time in order to correct the problem. If they don't correct the problem, then we cut the grass, and we charge them a fairly hefty amount to cut the grass. And so it is, unfortunately, is a process that takes longer than any of us would want it to, it's part of the code enforcement process that we have to follow.
My question is, I talked to Mr. Affaker and Tom, and they told me they are not code enforcement officers?
Well, they're wrong. I can't tell you anything different. This is directly from Bill Anthony. Okay?
Thank you.
Yes.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, thank you for checking into that issue. Let me extend that that issue extends all the way from, I'm just concerned, you know, I have to be concerned about my district primarily, from 63rd and Carroll South to 46th Street. So I appreciate that.
It was the India Branch, Counselor Williams, India Branch, actually, the culvert that you're referencing actually flows into India Branch, I N D I A, it's mixed with Indian Creek sometimes. It's India Branch, it then flows on through Doug Smith's property. Doug Smith's property, he has done a terrible job of maintaining his ditch. The reality is, is that ditch is on private property, the responsibility of the landowner to maintain that ditch. He apparently has pushed a bunch of stuff into the India Branch, which it turned backs up onto, I think Sylvie, Parnell, there's about four or five of them, these water backs up in major rain events. We have been unable to get much cooperation from Mr. Smith for a number of years. We may be able to sort of force the issue with him, but we're not allowed to get on private property with our equipment in there. We do have, we will get permission from the Lipscoms to take care of that first part of that culvert in front of there and move that back, and that will actually run all the way into India Branch.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Well, about the walking paths or the bridges for 56th Street and German Church, well, I've met with the DPW director and assistant director. It seems to be, the problem is, we're not having a voice or someone to represent us downtown about these issues that we have, these safety issues that we're having. So I left the meeting with the understanding that if Lawrence would take the lead on assisting...
I'm sure that it would.
Well, it's our city and it's our citizens that we have to be concerned with, is what I'm getting at. I understand the political jargon and all that, I get it.
Political law, it's a matter of who's responsible for the car.
Well, I understand, sir, but a little cooperation would go a long way. I'm just concerned about my constituents' safety in my district. And so if we, like I offered the community grant as an option, we seem to have enough funding to do...
...be used for walkways or for bridges.
Okay, so we have to find other ways to help out with our constituents in our city, is what I'm getting at.
Counselor Williams, let me segue here. Mayor, thank you for those updates, and I'm not cutting anybody off, but I did want to take this opportunity. Counselor Williams, might be beneficial for you to have a name and a face. We have a representative here, actually, from the mayor's office from the city of Indianapolis. Her name is Mo McReynolds, and she is the mayor's neighborhood advocate.
Okay.
Happy to have you here. She smiled when you mentioned that issue, so perhaps she could be a help to getting an ear downtown to address, start having some dialogue regarding this issue. Not trying to give you work at your first meeting, but...
I'm here for her.
Okay.
All right.
And there are, she will have cards in the back, and will you be available to meet any of the counselors? Okay, great.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam President. So some of the other issues that were not addressed were the sidewalk issues that we're having problems with, 6262 White Rabbit, and on Rose Haven, 12430 Rose Haven. And so have we looked... Well, I see that DPW came out and marked it, but do we have a time schedule, a timeframe, where there would be some action towards improving those sidewalks? Because they're becoming a safety issue. We have people that are disabled, and I've actually witnessed them tripping over that sidewalk piece. So before accidents happen, let's... Do we have any proactive answers to the...
I have a meeting to talk with Jim Henigan, which I'm assuming you've already called to report that issue?
Absolutely.
Okay, we had a group coming out, or guy coming out last year, it's called Deckers Build Hole, they raise the concrete up. I'm assuming that would be the solution.
Okay. Yeah, I just... And also, sir, if you would, would it be okay if you forward that email to me in reference to response with the issues or concerns that I have about the flooding?
Actually, just if you could just resend it, because I did check, I don't have it, and neither does council attorney. So if you could just send it to council attorney, I'll make sure that it gets out to everybody. Thank you.
Okay. So I have some new concerns. Sorry to take so much of the time, but that's what I'm here for. I'm not here about the time schedule, I'm here to address the issues of my district. And one is, we had a rash of vandalism in the Whiny Ridge area, and it's brought to my attention that officers were called to the scene, and they did not do a report stating that they did not witness the vandalism occurring. Now, I understand that vandalism reports doesn't take that long, but if a citizen, and if we're not talking one or two, we're talking multiple issues with this vandalism. I think that taking a few minutes to write a report wouldn't be, would resolve a lot of issues and or concerns. And I appreciate that, chief, if we address that. Two is, those, the lights that are within our community, and I'm, once again, I'm talking about my district primarily right now, are we eligible to replace lights with LED lights to get more lighting and everything? That would be nice if we have a time schedule for that, to let the people know that we are working on that. If someone can contact Republic, I'd be more than willing to do it, but I would like to forward, like DPW, to contact Republic and let them know when they are exiting subdivisions, in particular District 4, my district, that they pay attention to litter falling off their truck. It's becoming an issue, and it's been brought to my attention, so I'm bringing it to administration attention. Also, if we can, we can address the... We have a lot of issues with speeders in these communities, especially on 52nd Street, that little stretch there, they are really getting up there through there. So if we can get some patrols, that'd be nice, if we could address that. That's all that I have for now, Madam President. Thank you for your time, thank you for being patient with me.
Any other counselors?
Madam President.
Yes, Counselor Wells?
Just to expand on...
Now, I understand that vandalism reports doesn't take that long, but if a citizen, and we, if we're not talking one or two, we're talking multiple issues with this vandalism. I think that taking a few minutes to write a report wouldn't be, would solve, would resolve a lot of issues and our concerns. And I appreciate that, Chief, if we addressed that. Two is those, the lights that are within our community, and I'm, once again, I'm talking about my district primarily right now. Are we eligible to replace lights with LED lights to get more lighting and every, and everything? That would be nice if we, we have a time schedule for that, to let the people know that, that we, we are working on that. If someone can contact Republic, I'd be more than willing to do it, but I would like to forward, like DPW, contact Republic and let them know when they are exiting subdivisions, in particular District Four, my district, that they pay attention to litter falling off their truck. It's, it's becoming an issue and it's been brought to my attention, so I'm bringing it to administration attention. Also, if we can, we can address the, we have a lot of issues with speeders in these communities, especially on 52nd Street, that little stretch there, they are really getting up there through there. So if we can get some patrols, that'd be nice if we could address that. That's all that I have for now, Madam President. Thank you for your time. Thank you for being patient with me.
Any other councilors?
Madam President.
Yes, Council Wells?
Just to expand on Counselor Jones's concerns on this, on these inspectors, I too was under the impression that there was three inspectors that was going to deal with the tall grass and with the abandoned vehicles, with litter. If we pass this proposal four, they'll be dealing apparently with, with the vandalism from graffiti. And I was under the understanding we had three inspectors. I appreciate the mayor naming off all the inspectors with the utility and all, but that doesn't tell us who the inspectors are that's going to address these issues. And like I said from previous meeting, it was said that there was three of them, I only am aware of one. And, and if this proposal number four gets passed tonight, then that's just going to put more burden on yet another one person. And once again, also, just to remind the administration, I'm not going to go away on this billboard thing. I would like to have this information that I've asked for and not for it to get forgotten. So if I don't have it again by next meeting, I'll bring it up again next meeting, and I'll continue to do so. So, thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Wells. Any other councilors?
Brief comment, two things. One, on 79th Street, the bridge that's going towards Fall Creek is the responsibility of Marion County, but I appreciate the street department of Lawrence taking the street sweeper and cleaning up all that concrete that was chipped up from last winter. I had three texts by the time that I got home from people that were traveling that saying, "Great job." Secondly, on the way over here, happened to go by a neighborhood, and I saw, I'm not sure what the name of the equipment is, but it was ripping up a road in preparation for repair. So it's nice to see those kinds of public work projects going, and I appreciate it.
Yeah, and to piggyback on that, there's paving projects all over the city. I was behind several vehicles this weekend, and so it's nice to get those roads repaved. They look really good, and it really makes it a lot easier when you're commuting to and from work every day, so thanks for that, I really appreciate it.
Any other councilors? Okay. Moving on to approval of minutes of regular meetings of July 2nd and July 18th, 2018.
I'll make a motion that we approve the minutes for both dates.
Motion, Counselor Parker?
Second.
Second, Counselor Freeman. Any discussion? All in favor to approve the minutes for July 2nd and the 18th? Next, we have signing of vouchers, approval of claims, and authorization of payment. Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Motion, Counsel Wheeler?
I'll second the motion.
Second, Counselor Parker. Any discussion?
Madam President?
Yes, Counselor Jones?
I've got two questions. Mr. Fenwick maybe will answer it. On page four of 14, we have two charges for a street sweeper, $2,000 each. Was this before we got our new street sweeper, another one was broke, or?
I'm sorry, what page was that on?
Four of 14, very bottom.
We obviously purchased a new sweeper. We had one that needed some repairs, and in addition to that, we rented two, and those on page four, 14, were the rental of two strippers to enhance the operation.
Okay. And then I had one more. On page seven, 14, a golf rental, is $812. Is that just for one golf cart, or is that multiple, or?
I don't know the specific answer on how many. I can find that out, but I don't know if it was for one or multiple.
I do know that if it was, oh, that was a great price, because golf cart rental on Fourth of July weekend is very expensive because of demand, so if it was for 10, that's a good price, so thank you. Any other discussion? Okay. All in favor by show of hands to pay the bills? Unanimous? Next, we have reports of committee. We have two. I'm going to start with zoning.
Madam President, zoning committee met at 5:15 this evening, and we determined, we determined that we are taking this matter to a hearing as a whole, as council as a whole. And that is scheduled for September 5th at 5:00. Four o'clock. Wait, Tuesday, sorry, Tuesday, September 4th at 5:30.
Okay, great.
So she's making the motion, and we need a second.
Yep. So with that being said, I'm making a motion that we, recommended from the committee, I make a motion to have the hearing on September 4th at 5:30.
I'll second.
Second, Counselor Jones. Any discussion? All in favor by show of hands? Unanimous? Code.
Yes, Madam President, we met today to discuss the two proposals that, proposal number four and proposal number six, and both proposals were unanimously approved for the amended version of those two proposals by the code committee.
Okay, thank you.
And recommended to full council for vote tonight, yeah.
All right, under unfinished business, we have proposal number four, 2018.
Proposal number four, 2018, introduced by Counselor Parker, a proposal for an ordinance amending the municipal code of the city of Lawrence, Indiana to adopt a new chapter of Title Three, Article Three, to establish standards for the elimination of graffiti.
And that has been recommended, because we had amendment, I need a motion, is there a motion on the amendment, proposal number four, 2018?
Madam President, I make a motion that we accept, that we put before the council the amended version of proposal number four, 2018.
Thank you, is there a second?
Second.
Second, Counsel Williams. Okay, any discussion? All in favor by show of hands? Okay, so now we're going to move on to a motion to approve proposal number four, 2018.
Make the motion.
Motion, Counsel Wheeler?
Second.
Second, Counselor Jones. All in favor by a show of hands to pass proposal number four, 2018? Next, we have proposal number six, 2018.
Proposal number six, 2018, introduced by Counsel Williams, a proposal for an ordinance amending the municipal code of the city of Lawrence, Indiana regarding litter on private property.
Is there a motion to approve the amended version of proposal number six, 2018?
I'll make the motion.
Motion, Counsel Wheeler? Second, Counsel Williams. Any discussion?
Madam President, we're talking about an amended version, was this amended just in this code committee that was held today? Because I don't have it up.
It was amended in the code committee, but I thought what Kathy said included the amended version, which was highlighted as well.
Okay.
I sent that out.
That's in Section 1 on the first.
Okay.
And owners shall not be fined under this section for litter in the public right of the city.
Okay.
Okay, any-
Clarify that.
Thank you, Counselor Chevlat. Is there any other discussion? Yes, Counselor Giles?
I do have one, excuse me, I do have one question as far as in support of this. To truly, it is my opinion, to truly keep the city free of litter, where we could see a recognizable difference, we're going to have to, in my opinion, have a program coming from the city, and I know we've had purchasing of new sweet sweepers and things like that. So one of the questions I kind of had, maybe this has leaded to the administration, is once we pass this, will we have any program or process behind this to kind of support it? So, you know, more than just trying to encourage people to pick trash up in their yard. So, I mean, I don't know if that is, it has to be question answered now, I just kind of want to put that out there for the susceptible.
I mean, it deserves an answer. In everything that we do up there in terms of organs, it's a matter of the enforcement ability. And that's so often the case, is that you can pass a lot of rules, a lot of laws, you have to have the manpower and ability to actually enforce those laws. So to the best of our ability, I appreciate you guys talking about the paper, as some of the stuff that is happening in the city. We are limited, obviously, to what we can do, and can't do it at a certain time, but it certainly is the intent. I can tell you, it sure is the intent of the city, to be able to make a more aggressive effort toward getting the trash picked up. As most of you are known, we bought a mat back, which is going to make us much more able to patrol the roads and pick up the trash. Chief Hoffman has already got a group of-
Corrections.
Corrections people that will walk along with the mat back and do some picking up of the trash. Now, I don't know that we can get it all, but we can sort of make a dent in it. So to answer your question is, absolutely, we're prepared to make a greater effort. But I also have to tell that my people work pretty hard, and they only have so much time to make it, but we'll get to it later. I'd like to hear to you that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Okay, all in favor by a show of hands? Okay, that's unanimous. Okay, now we need a motion to approve proposal number six, 2018.
Motion.
Motion, Counsel Wheeler?
I'll second.
Second, Counselor Giles. Any discussion? All in favor by a show of hands? New business. Resolution number six, 2018.
Resolution number six, 2018, introduced by Counsel Chavis, a resolution concerning the joint application of the city of Lawrence and Arts for Lawrence for the Lilly Endowment and strengthening Indianapolis through arts and cultural innovation grant.
Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Motion, Counselor Parker, is there a second?
Second.
Second, Counselor Freeman. Any discussion?
So, Madam President, we got something clear on, on this, and Ms. Byron expressed to us, this is just in support of going after the grant, correct?
Yes, this is just a resolution in support of the application.
Yep.
Thank you for that question. Any other councilors? Okay, by a show of hands?
No, we don't.
I'm sorry, I thought I made the motion. It was Counselor Parker and Counselor-
Did I miss?
Yes, you missed it.
Taking notes, sorry.
You slept. So it was a motion by Counsel Wheeler, second by Counselor Freeman. Any more discussion?
It was Parker.
Parker, sorry. I had it right the first time, you're confusing me, Counsel Wheeler. All in favor by a show of hands to approve resolution number six, 2018? Okay, we have seven opposed. Counsel Wells?
So it's eight to one?
Yes. So the resolution passes, thank you. Next, we have proposal number seven, 2018.
Proposal number seven, 2018, introduced by Counsel Wells, a proposal for an ordinance amending the municipal code of the city of Lawrence, Indiana to adopt a new chapter of Title Three, Article Three, to establish standards for private event security and fines for public nuisances.
Okay, that's going to be assigned to code. Next, we have proposal number eight, 2018.
Proposal number eight, 2018, introduced by Counsel Wells, a proposal for an ordinance amending the municipal code of the city of Lawrence, Indiana to reduce the speed limits in the Winfield Heights subdivision.
That will be assigned to code as well. Next, we have proposal number nine, 2018.
Proposal number nine, 2018, introduced by Counsel Giles, a proposal for an ordinance amending the municipal code of the city of Lawrence, Indiana to adopt a new Chapter 11 of Article Two of Title Four to establish a landlord registration program.
One, one second on that, please. All right, thank you, that is going to go to code as well. Proposal number 10, 2018.
Proposal number 10, 2018, introduced by Counsel Jones, a proposal for an ordinance amending the municipal code of the city of Lawrence, Indiana, Chapter Two of Article One of Title Three, regarding retirement, honor, and recognition for members of the city of Lawrence Police Department Reserve Division.
That will go to code as well.
I don't know the exact protocol, and eight went really fast. I'm Joanna Reinhardt, and I'm the president of the Winfield Homeowners Association.
Joanna, if you give me a moment, we will have an opportunity for you to come forward.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, next, we have proposal number 11, 2018.
Proposal number 11, 2018, introduced by Counselors Chevlat and Giles, a proposal for an ordinance amending the 2018 budget as approved by the common council with respect to the general fund.
That will be assigned to finance. Comments of the administration.
Parker here, I got to bring up some good things here. First of all, thank you for the opportunity, President Chavis, for this. As promised, the first thing I'd like to do is bring Jason Fenwick and Jimmy Griffin up here to accept 2018 Government Finance Officers Association Budget Preparation Award. So, Jimmy? Also, Streeter, not here right now, but should be up there, too, but getting Jimmy here in front of you all is hard. I had to actually tell him that we weren't going to have a discussion over, but let me go on. This award is the highest award in governmental budgeting, and is reflected of the excellent work reflected by Jason and his staff. Particularly notable is the actual document prepared and presented to the GFOA by Jimmy Griff. That's, that's the budget right there. Okay, that's what Jimmy helped to prepare.
We're going to need that tonight.
It's heavy, it's like a history book. All of us in this room have seen the number of examples of his skill, Jimmy, but I have to admit, it's very meaningful to me personally to see his efforts recognized at the national level. I've had the opportunity to travel and work with Jimmy over the last two years, and his growth, both personally, intellectually, and professionally, has been pretty amazing. I hate to embarrass you, but I know I am, okay? Once again, the city of Lawrence is one of only three cities in Indiana to receive this recognition for 2018. It's our second year in a row. We are joined by South Benefishers. It's particularly important to note that Lawrence does not hire this presentation preparation out to any other financial organization, saving the city anywhere from $80,000 to $250,000. That's what South Benefishers pay. Congratulations to Jason, Jason Streeter, Jimmy, and the entire controllers department. See, I'm kind of proud of him, and there, and Jason, too, but he's got a big head already. Oh, you want a picture?
Take a picture, take a selfie?
Last Monday, we welcomed eight new officers to LPD, as they were sworn in by myself, Hoffman, and Kathy Walton. These eight officers represented rather historic occasion, as they are the most ever sworn in at one time in the city's history. Captain Erica Schneider, though I don't think Erica's here, led this process, started with nearly 400 applicants, dwindling it down to these seven men, and for the first time in 11 years, a woman, who rose to the top from an original number of over 400 applicants. The Fort Ben Farmers Market continues to thrive under the leadership of Amanda Wright and her able assistant Laura Wack, as we are averaging about 500 customers per market. Vendors are reporting record sales, and market attendees enjoy the variety of activities that are provided each- that are provided each week. It's truly become a family event. Today marks the first day of demolition. Chief Hoffman was like a kid in a candy shop today, clearing the lot for the police headquarters. They brought down a couple of big trees. Work will be moving along at a rapid pace with the projected finish date of sometime next fall. As many of you are already aware, we had an impressive show of community support and a groundbreaking ceremony, that we were joined by nearly 200 citizens, a variety of local law enforcement agencies, local government representatives, along with four network cameras and reporters. It was a great day for the city of Lawrence. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next, we have citizens' comments. So if you haven't already signed up in the back, please do so. She'll be the last one, yeah. If she could, please. Sue Reed? Please step forward and state your name and address for the record.
Sue Reed, 4769 Vernon. I know I've said before, I can't always come to a council meeting, but I watch you on TV. And I was not happy at the last council meeting. I feel like Councilwoman Wells deserves an apology, and I feel like I deserve apology. Just because you don't hear something doesn't mean it wasn't said. And I felt like that I was being called a liar, and I am not a liar. And I'm not happy with Mrs. Parker. She should have not said what she said. I'm sorry she didn't hear it. But I wasn't the only one. Counselor Jones heard it, Jim Silver heard it, and Paul Rogers heard it. So I wasn't the only, anybody was talking to me. And so I don't appreciate how Counselor Wells was handled last time, and I think that you guys do not respect each other. And I think you guys need to start respecting the council. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Next, we have Linda Moore.
Linda Moore, 4909 Leon Drive. As we've walked through the neighborhood in the last week or so, passing out our notices for the upcoming crime watch meeting and the Brookhaven National Night Out, I want to thank the police officers for their continued patrols. They are being noticed, that their presence is out there. We had a very quick response recently over on Kitlee, which was greatly appreciated because it was a bunch of young teenagers, and it could have quickly gotten out of hand because it had been brewing for a while. So with that, we're hearing a lot of feedback in the neighborhood. Again, we want to see the Brookhaven area more revitalized. We need to get the trash out there. There's been a sofa and a love seat sitting out there since last Big Trash Day. Unfortunately, the people put it out right after supposedly maybe Big Trash would have gone through. It was in the afternoon. But sometimes our Big Trash doesn't get picked up till the next day. So who knows? But it's still sitting out there. The kids are playing on it, jumping off into the street. It is a hazard. I've been told, you know, due to our protocol, it may sit out there till the third Monday of the month, when maybe it'll get picked up by Big Trash. We still have not received one of the newer street signs on the corner of Leon Drive and 49th Street. In fact, the Leon Drive street sign is missing. I asked for this last year when the new signs came out. Just kind of sitting back and waiting to see how long it takes. And kind of my third thing is, I think we need to revitalize the basketball goal situation. The quick and easy thing is that the goals need to be situated where there's no playing area in the street. I had one sitting out in the street all the beginning of this week with the schools starting and the buses coming through, and it was in the street. Nobody was playing. It was there overnight. And they drug it in the other day. It'll be back out. And I know Mr. Giles addressed it with the family, but that also, basically, they said, "So what? We can." And that may not have been what they told him, but that is the attitude, because the last time he did address it with the family, it sat out there for another three days. But it was out there a good portion of this week. With the kids playing out at it, it attracts other kids, it attracts other people in the neighborhood coming down where the owners of the house are not there. It's a problem. And there's one up on 52nd Street, which sits right on the street. And there are ones down Kitlee and other places where there are a lot of parked cars, and the kids are playing in and out between the parked cars. So if they would take them up the driveways, where they know the areas are going to be playing up in the driveways, that's a different story. But when you've got little preschoolers out there shooting baskets at dusk, and you cannot see them because of how the cars are parked, somebody's going to get hurt. And this has been this way for years, and we had the ordinance put out there to beginning to eliminate this problem. And I realize it's not enforced, and it's very difficult to get it enforced, but something's going to, we're going to get somebody hurt at some point. I mean, last year, I was assaulted by the guy across the street because I took one of the basketballs. I can't, if the basketball goal's out there, I can't park my car in front of my house. I get told, "You have a driveway to park in." So I mean, it is an issue, and it's going to boil over at some point and be a bigger issue. And as we're cleaning up these neighborhoods and we're trying to make them a better livable space, there are areas for these kids to go play basketball in besides playing in the street. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Moore. Next, we have, I hope I'm pronouncing this correctly, Jolene Reinhardt? Ma'am, if you could just state your name. If I mispronounced it, I'm sorry. An address for the record?
It's okay. Joellen Reinhardt, 10847 Tanbark, Winfield subdivision. In the first issue, I saw that we were going to be, that proposal eight was for the Winfield speed reduction, but we are not Winfield Heights. We are simply Winfield subdivision. I have the documents that were filed in 1996 with the Marion County Auditor, the Recorder's Office, and the Lawrence Township Assessor's Office that just states simply Winfield.
Great, thank you.
If that could be changed, that would be good. We are a very small subdivision. We're 102 homes. And that said, there are two main streets, Sedge Grass and Tanbark, that actually, because of the curvature of the streets, intersect each other. When cars park on both sides of the streets, as they should, the traffic has to go down the middle of the street. We have a lot of children. We have, our age group is from newborn up to 82. And we are concerned, because 25 miles an hour in that subdivision is fast. The board unanimously approved making this request. And what we did independently was each of us went out and drove, and we drove the speed limit 25. And then we just decided to drive where we felt comfortable. And for all of us, it was 15 miles an hour. So we really would like this to happen before there's an accident, before someone's injured. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is adjournment. We're adjourned.